Great, it's seven o'clock. Welcome, everyone. Rocco, please.
Trustee Weekly.
President.
Trustee McAvoy.
President.
Trustee Wells.
Here.
Vice President Lawson.
Here.
President Marcus.
Here. Again, welcome, everyone, to another Revit City School District Board Meeting. If si necesita interpretación al español, por favor, llame al nueve siete ocho nueve nueve cero cinco uno tres siete y presione ocho tres siete siete cero cuatro uno y el número de el signo del número para la contraseña. Speaking to the board is encouraged. Public is encouraged to speak to the board on issues of concerns, whether or not the issue is or are on the agenda. To address the board, please complete a speaker's card. If you're here in the room and give it to Evelyn to my left. If you are at home, if you can, please fill out a Google Sheet. If you wish to speak to the board on a subject listed on the agenda, you will be called to the podium at the time of the item is being considered by the board. If the item is not on the agenda, you will be called to the podium during oral communication. Public comments are limited to three minutes per person, per topic, unless otherwise noted. Again, welcome, everyone, and are there any changes to the agenda? Having here nine, can I please get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we have any oral communication?
No oral communication.
Great, thank you. Moving along to board program consent items. Six point one approval of, I'm sorry. Are there any questions? Or comments? If not, can I please get a motion? To approve the consent on program.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Item seven, that we don't have any action items. Eight, community reports. Eight point one, discussion of the school plan for student achievement for Roy Cloud and North Star Academy.
Tonight, we have two presentations and we have representatives from our two schools here to present. And we're going to start with Roy Cloud. And I'm going to be sharing the screen. And so if you guys would like to step forward to introduce yourselves.
Hey, everyone, I'm Melissa Bowden. I'm sorry.
Hi, everyone, I'm Melissa Bowden, I'm the principal.
And I'm Christie Jackson, Assistant Principal.
And we are here to present our SIPSA report that we are very excited to share with you guys. I will be reviewing goal one. Christie is going to go over goal two, and then we'll share goal three and how we embrace our community and stakeholders. So in goal one, we have focused on what it truly means to teach the whole child and to empower our students to be partners with us in the educational journey to help them see themselves as change makers and to know that they are valued and appreciated and seen for who they are as individuals, scholars, and community members. So for our tier one approaches to addressing our suspension concerns, we already have a lot of longstanding solid practices in place that are working. Some of these include our character strong curriculum, our PBIS model that's woven into every fiber of our school, namely, our monthly assemblies that align with our character traits. We have live school with houses to promote positive choices and to add to the positive and productive environment of our school that we'll go over in a little bit. We have the continuation of school and classroom norms, restorative practices, and partnering between home and school. And we also have our GSA club, which is called Rainbow Cloud. Some new things to this, new to this year is the Institute for SEL's open sessions, which we'll also go over in a little bit. We have brought on the Safe School Ambassador Program. The administration is getting into the classroom to model lessons and to support implementation of best practices. And we also partnered with our PTO to bring a docu-series to our, to bring our community together, one of which we'll be showing tomorrow evening at MIT. We also have our climate and culture PLCs that every staff member is involved in. We've brought on NUA this year for third through fifth grade, and we'll talk about what our plans are for the future. We've partnered with the County Representative Mason Hendricks to talk more about how to provide a more inclusive environment for our students. We actually collaborated with with Kennedy, who has an incident report form that we really liked. And so we took that idea and adopted it for Roy Cloud. And we were also inspired by the student empathy interviews that we learned from our MTSS meetings. And we brought that to our school as well, where we had every teacher do an empathy interview for for our students to get to know them better. And upcoming in May, we have a Unity Day planned. So some of our tier two and tier three supports really is to bring our families together and to ensure that all facets of our student are is supported. We have regular screen team meetings that come, we come together as a team to discuss student progress and bring all resources together to ensure our students' needs are met. And one thing that was incredibly beneficial this year is at the beginning of the year, the screen team met and reviewed last year's data and together met with individual students to discuss goals, aspirations, and to let them know that we are here for them and we want them to achieve and succeed. So what are some things that are going well is our Safe School Ambassador Program? We have many things that are going well, as you can see. Some of the things that I'm going to just draw attention to is our Safe School Ambassador Program, our live school houses, the open sessions and NUA. And I just wanted to to say a few, read a few quotes from our teachers who feel very passionately about the work that NUA is is bringing to our school and the the emphasis it's bringing into the classroom culture. So one of our fourth grade teachers said that NUA strategies build confidence and community in the classroom and engage each student at their level. A fifth grade teacher said that NUA helps empower students to engage in classroom discussions and give them confidence to collaborate in open discussions. And one of our other teachers said that NUA lessons have been engaging and powerful for my students. The lessons provide a range of opportunities and perspectives that are beneficial for all and help them interact with the lessons and which and which therefore are meaningful to them. And so we mentioned live school houses and open sessions. And so live school is a program that our our students, third through eighth grade, are enrolled in. And they get points. So the houses, you can kind of think of Hogwarts, but with cloud names. So our houses are House Nimbus, House Seris, House Cumulus, House Stratus. And the students work together, they're, they are organized in the different houses, third through eighth, and they work together to build points for their houses by engaging in positive interactions and making choices that add to the school environment. And then at the end of the month, that house that has the most points gets a little celebration. The open sessions are a great wide opportunity to discuss what's going on in a student's life, in in all of the students' lives, and to problem solve together. It's extremely effective and is one of the best ways that we've amplified student voice. And then after these open sessions are done, we reach out to the families to communicate the topics that were discussed during these open sessions so that they can continue the conversation at home. And so really, a lot of our efforts are around opening the lines of communication for students, staff, and families. Some improvements and changes. So we had, we had a need for additional counselors, and One Life provided us with that. Out of no fault of anyone or no control of anyone else, we navigated inconsistencies in the the role that the One Life counselor held. We had a One Life counselor start with us, and then we transitioned a new one. And that did impact some of the supports that we're providing our students. And some things that we're considering is bringing on more safe school ambassadors and to bring NUA schoolwide. We've experienced so much growth in NUA in so many areas due to this implementation, and we feel it appropriate and necessary to bring it to all students and teachers. And so for our chronic absenteeism, so we're hoping that with some of the efforts that are already put in place and ones that we're going to continue next year, that we're going to lower our targets by roughly 5%. You'll notice that many of the supports that are in place for our chronic absenteeism are very similar to that of the suspension data. But in addition, I just want to draw, I want to point out that one of the things that we do is related to student attendance, we have implemented a personal approach to each case of the and the efforts and supports that we put in place by reaching out individually and spending time with the families and hearing out what their concerns are, maybe what some of their hardships are, so that we can, we can work with them individually to to meet their needs. In addition to to making individual calls and checking in with with individual families, we also want our students to enjoy coming to school. In addition to what has already been presented, we also want to take into consideration what the experiences are outside of the classroom when they come to school. So for that, we think of appropriate assemblies. The middle school ASV is incredibly active, brings a lot of rallies and fun events that students can engage in in their lunchtime activities. We've brought on guest speakers and namely, more authors that are representative of our of our student population. So some things that we'd like to continue working on and possibly change. One of the things that's really working is constant communication. We send weekly newsletters out that talk about things that are going on in our school and in different grade levels. Parents have mentioned that this has made them feel more connected to what's going on in in school and in what's going on in their in their child's grade. We're going to continue to personally invite parents and families to events. We are increasing opportunities for students to advocate for themselves. And we've seen that this has improved communication between teachers or staff and students and to build empathy around the student experience. And this information has helped us address their individual needs. And then additionally, we're looking at possibly working with our room parents and PTO to build a buddy family program for returning family, where where returning families can support the transition for new families into Roy Cloud so that they also can be supported. And now I'm going to pass it over to Christie.
Okay. So I'll be presenting the progress of our English learners or our emerging bilingual students and sharing our targets and strategies for reclassification. You'll see that 11 of our students were reclassified this school year, which is about half of our total number of emerging bilingual students. We're very proud of them and the work that they've done to reach this goal. Our target for the spring is that 60% of our students will achieve reclassification. We're optimistic that our students will reach this goal. In regard to reclassification for students, within five years of enrollment at RCSD, we are aligned with the district's expectations, therefore have selected targets of 100% reclassification for our fifth, sixth, and seventh graders. For key strategies that we've been implementing to reach our goals, I'd like to highlight a few that we're especially proud of. The first one is our success, successful collaboration with the National Urban Alliance. It's allowed our teachers to try different approaches to their instruction that promote diversity, inclusion, and a universal design for learning. We've been researching and utilizing different tech tools like photo translator to help assist our newcomers to better access the curriculum and instruction. Our classroom teachers continue to provide integrated ELD in the classroom using tools and resources provided in the curriculum and also bringing in supplemental materials. We're providing additional support to our emerging bilingual students through designated ELD, which is provided by our K through three and four through eight reading and intervention specialists. We have increased our community outreach to families of our emerging bilingual students to ensure equitable access to school events and important information. And we are continuously working on ways to make our community more welcoming and inclusive to all of our families. In addition, in tier two, we are reaching out to our emerging bilingual families personally to provide support with translation and connect them with resources that they need. Our MTSS TOSA is providing an after-school homework club, which many of our emerging bilingual students attend for additional support. And in tier three, our reading and intervention specialists are pushing into classrooms and working one-on-one to help our emerging bilinguals reach their goals. And of course, during IEP and 504 meetings, we are addressing and including strategies to improve their English language development. As far as instructional strategies that appear to be working for us to help us reach our targets, we've been utilizing our intervention specialists, like I had mentioned, our after-school homework club of pre-selected students. This year, National Urban Alliance with third through fifth grade, but is going to be rolled out schoolwide. That we've seen an increase of teacher collaboration and sharing of useful strategies that support a wide range of learners. And something that we've been discussing a lot lately, which is using more asset, asset-based language within our school community. An area of growth is that we want to continue to spend more time focusing on tier one strategies and practices that provide equitable access to curriculum and assessment. We would like to make some improvements by, as a staff, learning more about the ELD roadmap, increasing PD and training and ELD practices and strategies, learning more about and better utilizing iReady EEL resources, and establishment of an ELAC committee. This is something that we've been trying to do for the past few years. But with a limited number of families, we've had a hard time finding someone who would like to be a part of the ELAC committee. But we do continue to try. And we always represent our English learners at our school site council meetings. Lastly, we're very excited about a new partnership that we have with the Stanford Graduate Research Team. It's a program called Ladder, which supports teachers and specialists by taking curriculum, worksheets, and lesson plans and making them more accessible to students like our emerging bilingual students.
All right, so Christie and I are going to share going over goal three and addressing the academic areas of opportunity for our students and staff. All right, so what we'd like to present with you are, we wanted to present our fall and winter data. We have it. And it also helped us inform our projections for where we'd like to see our students in the spring. So you can see those on the screen there. You'll notice that all grades are making progress in each domain, and we are hopeful that with the current practices and some of the newer practices that we are, that we're trying out, that we will continue just to see that progress just continue to to rise. We'll review supports and efforts in place that we feel are some of the factors of the student progress. In addition to improving, to our improving iReady scores, we also are experiencing growth in our CASP scores. We look forward to reviewing the scores from this year as well, as it will help us track growth patterns and inform us further on the direction we should go in meeting our student needs. So so target one, supports that are in place. We really enjoyed the iReady PD that we were, that we were provided. Our teachers found it incredibly valuable. They, they learned how to analyze the data better and utilize the resources provided to meet all of our student needs. As a staff, we took a page out of this summer's admin training and have been conducting lesson remixes for all grades and subjects and look for opportunities to enhance lessons in an area to in an effort to bring a more modernized approach to our students and their learning. And of course, we talk a lot about NUA, but the NUA and coaching has provided an increase in rigor, class conversation, participation, student advocacy and choice, and challenging and providing more challenging and invigorating lessons. And now Christie will present tier two and three.
Yeah, and so some strategies in tier two to achieve our improvement, improvement targets, where we will continue with regular small group instruction, screen team meetings and the SST process, reading and math intervention specialists, middle school enrichment classes that extend learning and provide interventions to students who need them, our after-school tutoring program, and executive functioning support that is provided by our MTSS TOSA. In tier three, we're also providing one-on-one support in the classroom of teachers and specialists. We are implementing accommodations through 504 plans and IEPs. And our specialists and instructional aides are pushing into classrooms to support students and classroom teachers. Right, so next, iReady and CASP strategies can, in regard to improving iReady and CASP targets, where we will continue our work with the National Urban Alliance schoolwide next year. We will continue with our school-wide professional learning communities that all staff members are a part of. We will continue to have the support of our K through K through three and four through eight reading and math intervention specialists. We'll continue with small group instruction and collaboration. We would like to have more PD with iReady coaches on how to best utilize provided tools and resources. And we will continue to offer enriching options, including support classes for our middle school students. We know because our assessment data is improving in all areas, we see a higher level of engagement and student participation in classroom discussions. And we hear teachers discussing, ensuring best practices to meet the needs of their students.
All right, and so some of the strategies that we're kind of hoping to change or take a look at. One of the things that we were noticing is we, Christie and I, and the teachers at Roy Cloud have been really great at collaborating this year and wanting to hear all voices. Being a K eight means that we have multiple schedules going on at once, which can impact the ability to meet and navigate the scheduling conflicts. So we established an instructional leadership team who's going to help us look for opportunities that we may be missing so that we can optimize those meeting times and really engage in some discourse to help us meet some of these needs. Other things that we're looking at is increasing our STEAM initiatives and cross-curricular lessons as a way to breathe more life into UDL. But by providing students with better access to that, what the final product can look like, and so that it aligns to their strengths. We are learning, adapting, and applying more with the science of reading, with the science of reading approach. We're very excited to learn more about that. And I know that our teachers are are engaged in that process as well. All right, so we love our school. And we wanted to share some school events that these are just, this is just a snapshot at what our year has looked like so far. So you'll see that we have our students going on overnight field trips. One of the things that we're really working on and so and partnering with our PTO is providing equitable access to those field trips. So you'll see the fifth grade field trip is there, our seventh grade field trip is there, was a very snowy trip, but we made it happen. And we also are encouraging our teachers to look at some supplemental projects and activities to bring into school, not just for field trips. So in the top center is the walk-through, walk-through history program that comes into schools and is aligned with, they have one for fourth grade, which is around the Gold Rush, they have the walk-through, the American Revolution. And this is the sixth grade one, which is the walk-through kind of world history. And it's so engaging and it's so fun, and it helps our kids really kind of solidify their knowledge around the topics that they're learning in class. And then below our fifth grade photo is our garden program that we are very proud of and hoping to just expand on that even more. It brings a lot of enjoyment to our students. It helps them understand and kind of make tangible some of the science concepts that they're learning in class. And our fellow Isabel is amazing.
And you can see in the lower corners there, we have our very coveted event, the Chinese New Year Parade with our kindergartners. The whole school gets involved. The middle schoolers decorate the hallways, everybody comes out. It's a great event that we look forward to every year. And then also in the other corner, you have them with their mustaches on Lorax Day, where the teachers tie that into literacy, but also environmentalism. And there's a few pictures there also of an oferenda that we placed up for Dia de los Muertos in the library. And our fabulous music teacher, James Henry, who teaches a lot of multicultural music to our kindergarten through second grade students.
And then the center there is Sam, who came and during Inclusive Schools Week and was amazing and incredible and did presentations for all of our students. So took each different grade span and spoke with them. And we really leaned into that Inclusive Schools Week by having different activities for each of our students to participate in. And then with the kindness challenge, our students really leaned into that as well. It was really great to see. And student voice. So as we've said, one of our, one of the things that we really want to encourage with our students is amplifying their voice and helping them find it. And so some of the ways that we do that is we have our middle school-led conferences where they sit with their teachers and their parents, and they help with goal setting. It is incredibly beneficial, and it helps us really show our students that we are all here to support them and that home and school is a partnership. Like I said, our ASV is is very active. That's what some of these photos are, is they lead our monthly assemblies for our character traits. And they take it and run with it. It's it's really amazing. And they also do morning announcements that help to bolster some of the other things that are going on in our school, after-school sports, our after-school enrichment programs. They're now promoting our play that's coming up. So they do a really great job of shining a light in all areas of our school. And then, of course, the incident report form, which has been very beneficial. We know that it's hard for some students to come forward when they see something or something's happening to them. And so we want to provide them with better access to us if they want to do it privately so that we can, we can talk with them, you know, not when it's out on the schoolyard. And like we talked about with ASV, they they lead and run all the spirit days, and it's just, it's, it's fantastic.
And then our parents, we are so happy this year to have so many parents back on campus volunteering. We've also had some great community events already so far this year and have a lot more to look forward to to really get out and get in touch with our parents as much as possible. We have, we're still doing our monthly principal coffees. We're holding Get to Know Roy Cloud presentations for parents. We have done a volunteer and chaperone training, really trying to get parents back into the classrooms and on campus. We have a weekly newsletter that goes out to families. We have been trying to call families personally to talk to them when things are coming up, if we think that maybe they didn't hear about it. Of course, we have a strong collaboration with our school site council. We have been seeking feedback from parents and students through surveys and questionnaires. Of course, school tours and summer play dates. Our younger students always do summer play dates, and this year we would really like to expand that so that all of our students have an opportunity to meet new friends and get acclimated to school in the summer before they start.
And for concluding comments, come and visit. We would love to have you guys there. I know our kids would love to show off what they're learning and what they're doing, so our door is always open. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any questions?
Thank you. And I'll go ahead and leave it for the trustees to ask any questions if they want to begin.
Yeah, I don't have any questions either, but I'll make a comment, couple of comments. First of all, thank you very much, Melissa and Christie, for being here. So nice to hear from Roy Cloud, and I always enjoy going up to the school. I was remembering that I I went to, I don't know exactly what it was called, but I think it was in September, October, November, your big
Fall Fest.
Fall Fest. And oh, my goodness, I'd never seen so many people on that campus, right? I think it was like one of the bigger events Roy Cloud has ever had. And I, and I know that same kind of six-week period, I was going around to a lot of the schools because schools were having those. And every school was having this tremendous turnout, right? Because there was such a pent-up desire just to be in person and be together and community build. And and I know that's something that Roy Cloud does a really good job of, and it sounds like you're continuing it this year. And as you said, you know, particularly for the newer parents who only came to us in COVID, they haven't had some of these experiences, right? Like, how do you get back in the classroom? Or how do you even get into the classroom to begin with, right? So that's really nice that you're making some personal calls, maybe to some families that you think maybe would like to come in, but don't really know how to come in. So I think that's great, just the the parent and the family engagement that you're doing. That's so important. And I did want to say, I'm very impressed with the emerging bilingual student program that you have and all that you're doing and really like to see that we have 100% of our students by that fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth grade. I mean, ideally, you know, by sixth, seventh, eighth grade, if they're reclassified, then they can fully participate in the middle school program and then be fully prepared for high school. So thank you for focusing in on that. And the ASV program, I mean, years ago, like there was a couple of years in a row where I know the program and the teacher got accolades and awards and all of that. And it's been a longstanding tradition that you've had a lot of student engagement and leadership opportunities, particularly in the middle school, but also going down to some of the other grades. And again, you know, it fits right into that idea of engagement and student voice and everything. So thank you for continuing to do that. And I don't, do you still have a teacher who's kind of in charge of those and it's the elective and? Yeah.
Teachers.
Teachers now. It used to be one, now you have multiple teachers, right?
Can I be the idiot who asked the question, what is the ASV program? I don't feel like I don't really understand.
Yeah, wait, that's a good question. Why don't you answer that?
Well, you can answer it.
Program.
So it's, it's, it's like student council, if you're familiar with student council. So it's like a student-run government that
Stand for?
Associated Student Body.
Student Body.
Yeah.
Got it. So people can run for positions. Thank you. I'm sorry, I just, it came up several times in the presentation, I just think.
Well, and I think, you know, schools have different ways they do it. But I think But I think Roy Cloud has been one of the leaders in really engaging the middle school students. And like I said, I know it was pre your time there, but maybe going back eight or 10 years ago. You know, got several awards by the one teacher at the time who's doing, I don't even know if that teacher is still there. But it sounds like you've got multiple teachers and
Yeah, she's still doing it.
Oh, that's amazing. That's awesome. Yeah, well, she's good at it. Yeah, that's awesome. And that to me, that I actually would be a great opportunity. I was thinking, you know, we we look for those best practices and you mentioned something that you took from Kennedy School. Like, if there are some schools that maybe don't have the program they want, I would say that I know Roy Cloud has a has a model to look at. And then finally, I just want to say, you know, NUA, we've talked a lot about it to the board. It does seem like it's really taking off at a lot of the school sites. That's great that you started with three, five. You're getting a lot of good feedback and so you're going to expand it. And again, I think the student voice and student engagement is really important. All right.
So thanks.
Thank you.
I'll also say, thanks Melissa and Kristy. You guys could sit down by all means. And I just wanted to double down on the NUA. I'm really excited as school sites are starting to adopt it more and more. Because it just feels like as they, the skill sets lead from one classroom to the next as they go through the grades. And the teacher comments that you put in there were were great. It was, you know, confidence, community, engage and collaborate. Like, those words came across from every teacher that talked about it and how the strategies helped. So I appreciate hearing that. So also, I liked hearing about the open sessions. Thanks for explaining those to us because I didn't know what they were. And the I forgot that. And how you reach out afterwards and then live school in the, in the houses. Those are interesting programs that I didn't know much about. So like hearing about it.
I think Mike was reading off my notes and I don't think that's very fair. I mean, I word for word, I have NUA. I just, we see it at all the school sites that are using it. It's a fantastic program. So thank you for engaging with them. And I know you're planning to expand that too to other grade levels. I have, you know, the the houses, the live school, I have the open sessions. So Mike, thanks for reading my notes for me. Also, anyway, I have the confidence, the community engagement, all of that just kept coming up. So I appreciate that. Really love hearing about the ASB, as Alisa mentioned. And then one thing that you mentioned, Melissa, was the newsletters and the parents feeling connected with that. And I just want to say, I really appreciate getting those from you. I know you sent them to all of us. So I think those have been fantastic. So thank you for doing that. Thanks, Mike.
So thanks for explaining ASB to the newbie. And thanks for the tour you gave me back in December as well. It seems like overall, like, things are going pretty well with this school. I mean, those classification rates were really super impressive. The improvement rates were great. Just, so I almost would want to take a step back and I I'm curious about what we can package about what's working well with the school in a way that we could make that actionable for some of the other schools in the district. Whether that's sharing findings, whether that's having teachers go and maybe pinch hit or help out at some of these other areas, or even having some of the students themselves help out at some of the other schools in the district. Because it's definitely not the case that every school in our district is going as well as Roy Cloud. And so I just would love to have some of that applied in in ways that could benefit some of the other schools in the district. So just fantastic job. So thank you to you, the teachers, the staff involved at Roy Cloud for very well-run school site.
But I think you're not trying, I think you're trying to say that everybody should be proud of their school that they're at, right? Like, you're not, you're not trying to imply that.
Yeah, it's just like if there's specific interventions that were done, like around the very high reclassification rate. Like, are there specific things that were done here that maybe could be replicated in some of the other school sites as well to help? That's what I'm trying to figure out. But great job. Thank you.
And again, thank you. And I think we have all copied each other or everybody read everybody's notes because we are pretty much on the same page. But I think that says that you guys both did a very well presentation. So I appreciate it. Again, my notes, because I'm just gonna, you know, say them too. Anyway, honestly, I cried. Well, I didn't really cry, but my tears really rolled when I went to watch the lab over at Clifford. And so I am really passionate about what the program is doing, the strategies, the teachers. The effort that everybody's putting into, I really love that you say you are now putting this school-wide is now just, not just for the lower grades. And then moving on to your goal setting of 100 to reach reclassification, that's awesome. And then under tier two, I really enjoy listening to that the MTSS TOSA had the after-school program to help. Did you say the bilingual students, I believe you said? And then your strategies to do the one-on-one reading support that has actually helped you. Obviously, we're looking at the scores and you guys are improving. So that's really great. I really love that you use the word inclusive because I think in Redwood City, we all are inclusive of everyone. And just as Mike, I mean, David mentioned that, you know, you guys are probably doing some things that we may or the other school sites may want to look at. I think all of our schools are unique in their own way and special in their own way. So I really appreciate that. With ELAC, I think my only kind of question, more of a comment is obviously with ELAC is how you pitch it to the parents. Because sometimes you have to be consistent in order for them to actually be able to say, you know what, let me try this, right? I know that's how I started as a parent like 20 years ago. So I think that that says a lot. And you guys reaching out, having your staff calling and doing a lot of personal calls. I did, I hear that a lot. I heard that a lot throughout the presentation. The I ready, I ready and Cass, again, improvements, that was great. The classroom participation improvement, student voice, of course, it's one of my favorites. We do want to get them ready, and especially with you guys talking about the ASB. We want to get them involved, right? There's a lot of times, we focus a lot on academics, which is great, but at the end of the day, students are going to live life and be citizens of this city, country, whatever. And so it's good that, you know, you guys are teaching them all that stuff that they need to know. And I think that's it for me. So again, I really appreciate it and thank you guys for the presentation.
Great. I'm going to take it in a little different direction. So first of all, Kristy, I want to say thank you. You came in last year and was the interim, and I really appreciate that. And Melissa, thank you for joining the Redwood City School District. You make a great team. I am very, for those of you, well, you wouldn't know because you're not probably going into the classrooms with with these two ladies. Thank you so much for modeling the lessons. I mean, as an instructional leader, we tend not to want to do that because we don't want to impinge on our thoughts, our strategies on others. But as instructional leaders, we need to do that. And you both are doing it. So I applaud you for doing so. I know sometimes it can be difficult when we are going to model in a classroom and expectation that we are looking for. But you walk the talk, you'll get the results and it's showing. So thank you both very, very much. Melissa, thank you so much for bringing the community more together, along with Kristy. I, it's very pleasing when you get parent emails and saying, you did, you made the right choice. That's the person we needed. We're very, very happy. So I applaud you. I applaud you also, Kristy, for remaining at Roy Cloud. The, the piece about NUA is, is fantastic. We had talked about that previously before, right before you joined. And I wasn't sure, but you have brought it in that direction. For many of our schools who are participating now in NUA, there is going to be what the county office is planning in regard to their visit from the lab school is to put together a day, it'll be in September, I believe. And we will, in Redwood City, be going to different school sites to show how the strategy is being used. Definitely you will be one of them. Along with that, Tony Thurman will be there. We thought we could get it done before the end of the school year. I told Superintendent McGee, I don't think any of us have the bandwidth to go in that direction right now. So she has rethought the manner and how we will move forward and it will be taking place in September. It's also going to be taking place with the one Ravenswood School District is embracing street data and what they're doing. So it's going to be a presentation that is going to highlight the Redwood City School District and the Ravenswood School District. So we'll be going between both districts. So I'll let you all know when that'll take place and hopefully you can be there. The other piece that was quite enlightening was to definitely read about your inclusive week. Great job, great job. I know that takes strength to do, especially when we're tackling some issues that are controversial, controversial, not only nationwide, but only also in our own community. So my hat's off to both of you for doing that. The other piece which stands out, live school houses, I knew nothing about that until you were talking right before school was starting. And I think, and I'm sure Sarah's going to say something about it also, but that what are these? What are these? Thank you for bringing that here. Thank you. Thank you so much. And then, as, as other board members have pointed out, whatever we can garner from other schools, like the incident report from Kennedy. Great. Why reinvent, why reinvent that wheel? It's there, use it. So I, I, I'm so thrilled that you're both the leaders of Roy Cloud School. I'm sure staff and parents are very happy that you're at the helm. And thank you and the staff and the parents that continue to work in the manner that's moving forward right now. Thank you. I really appreciate it. So you can stay for the next report or we know Excuse me one second, Martin, is that Martin? Do we know anything yet? Nothing. Right, that's Roy Cloud. Yeah, Leslie's out, sorry, Leslie.
Hi, anybody need like a stand break or like move around a little? I know these nights are long. Tell your kids, get up, move around, stretch your body. Because you got another one of these reports. I'm going to start my timer. Okay, good. Because that way we can see it on this Zoom. It's really easy to see, but it's kind of small here. So I am Sarah Shackle. I am the principal of North Star and this is Kelly Noriega, the assistant principal. And I want to highlight that our coach, Ms. Carolyn Williams, is here. She's always very supportive and you'll hear a little bit more about what she's doing with us. But I'm going to just start by saying, I'm going to assume you've read this board report. And I'm not ordered that you will. I, you know, I know there's a lot going on. I'm not going to like go through everything. So if you have questions that I don't necessarily highlight or that Kelly doesn't necessarily highlight, please feel free. But we know you're doing a lot of these and a lot of it is the same kinds of information. One of the things that I want to start with is the fact that I feel incredibly fortunate. We are standing up here as a team, but we represent a whole community of scholars, of teachers, of parents. And so what we're going to talk about isn't really about us per se, it's about what we do as a whole. And part of that whole for us is the other half. And so you're going to see a lot of things that are happening at other sites, whether that's been helped with us by Liz or Wendy. Because we are doing exactly what you've been talking about, which is talking to each other and sharing best practices. And there's a lot that you're going to see that's working for us, that's working for other sites as well. So I really credit that to the leadership, to Dr. Baker, to Liz, to Wendy, to everybody, the other principals who are in this with us. There's a couple of people that you'll see that I talk to a lot. Nick better be online. He told me he was going to be. And he, I mean, Melissa and I and he and I and Jude and Catherine, like, we all talk every day. And so it's really, a lot of this stuff is thanks to them and the support that they've given us as a whole. So I just want to start with that. All right, you ready, Liz? So exciting. Okay. I'm assuming you know what goal one is. Move through that. Okay, so at North Star, let's be honest. We have an amazing school with amazing community. We definitely have things that we're working on. Our suspension rates have never really been a concern for us, but we like to pay attention. We'd like to keep them to not be a concern. So we're doing some pretty interesting things because of the open sessions that I stole from Melissa. When we say steal, we mean lovingly share. And we had some parents, I'm just going to be honest and sort of tell you what's going on. We've had some parents share some concerns over a few key sort of aggressions, microaggressions, some just flat-out aggressions around sort of protected classes, whether that be LCTQ plus racism and so forth. So we did an open session with each of our grade levels that was focused on the question. Have, we asked each of the kids, have you either personally experienced or witnessed acts of hate speech? And we kind of defined out what that was. So I put a lot of links in here and there's some really interesting deep dive information that you're welcome to go through, just a few things to highlight from our open sessions specifically. With our sixth graders, 55% of our students reported that they had either experienced bias or they had witnessed bias. That grew to 71% in seventh grade and even more significantly to 80% by eighth grade. And that may seem like overwhelming and it does feel overwhelming that so many of our kids are reporting bias. But we took it really as a sign that they were open to sharing with us what their experience was. And we broke it down, if you really want to go deep into like what kind of bias they're experiencing and how they're experiencing it. And then we took that and we had parent meeting and a data sharing meeting with our students about what they had reported to us. So I'm a little bit of a data geek. I love looking at the data. And it was really enlightening. And our parents came together in a very powerful meeting where they shared their stories. And we'll talk a little bit about what came out of it. But it was really a wonderful way for us to connect as a community over. I know this says suspensions, but really this is about school climate, right? So how is it that our, even though our kids aren't being suspended necessarily, I mean, some of them are occasionally. But even though our kids aren't necessarily being suspended, they're still experiencing these sort of negative things that are associated with school. So it was really important for us that we were doing something to address that. We also do a house system. Also, I got live school from Melissa, but the house system came from my, like, cousins when we were talking about it. But so just an update for those scholars who are watching today, right now Sirius is ahead. 1,345 points. They have a very rambunctious competition. Kelly in her window has like which houses are ahead and they move the plaques depending. And it's very exciting that Sirius is ahead because traditionally Nova is ahead and they have a real rivalry going. So we're excited to announce that Sirius is in the lead right now. And I really need to highlight for this section, we have a very strong mental health team. And I want to thank you for providing us with that. Because we do have scholars who experience a lot with anxiety, depression and some pretty severe like level two and level three concerns. And our mental health team is just phenomenal. So shout out to them if they're watching, phenomenal at managing all that. Okay, next slide. So the thing that I want to highlight on here, there's a lot, but I want to bring your attention to the last section about what are we considering changing? So through the work with SFS, Greg Peters, for those of you who have met him, he was the one who came in and led our parent night, we have created, and we've gone through this with our site council, a three-tiered approach to what we need to do at North Star to address some of these more systemic issues. So our first step So our first step is that we're going to be creating a committee to really review our handbook and our practices around discipline. We need to take an equity focused lens to it. In fact, I was talking to Dr. Baker today about the need to actually align that across the district. Finding ways that we're all consistent in our handbooks about these type of discipline sort of reactions. It's not really a reaction, but I think what we're looking for is sort of a consistency in discipline. If this happens, then this happens. And we want to make that very clear. So Greg has some really amazing thoughts and ideas, some language that we can use. So we'll be forming a team to look at that. The second thing is that we need to review the curriculum, our curriculum, what we're using, whether that's projects cornerstone or what books they're reading. We need to have the curriculum reflect who our students are. And the reality for I think a large part of education, but for us at North Star is that much of the curriculum is still white male centered. And I'm not saying that to be offensive to anybody in the room. But when you look at who is telling the stories and what stories they're telling, we need to see our students, our students of color, our students of various genders, our students of various sexual orientations, they need to be represented in what they see in the classroom. And so that's really an important step for us. It's something that a lot of people are passionate about. We've had some really impassioned conversations at site council about it, but it's an important step that we need to take. The last one and a shout out to our parents' club, uh, are we need a DEI or diversity, equity and inclusion sort of parent overseeing role. We need to be looking at everything through our DEI lens. And so they've committed to establishing a parent, a parent role to actually look at that when we're budgeting, when we're creating school events. How is that representing everybody at our school? So that's the part I wanted to highlight. And now I'm so excited. I'm going to hand it over to Kelly.
Moving on to goal two, thank you, uh, Sarah. Thank you, board. Um, at North Star, on average, we have about four to six emergent bilinguals every school year. Usually within that first year at North Star, their second year is when we see them reclassifying. Um, this year, our scholars, uh, this year to support our scholars, we have hired a retired bilingual teacher who is actually working with them, supporting their English language development, their skills, um, both in language arts and math. Um, and we also have our uh new fourth way teacher, Mr. Carranza, who is also doing a homework club after school with our emergent bilinguals. Um, what we have noticed with universal testing is that more emergent bilinguals in Redwood City School District are eligible to attend North Star. So what we're seeing for the next school year is that um eight new scholars will be joining us. Six of those scholars are emergent or expanding in their English language development, which is requiring us to think a little bit differently, trying, requiring us to differentiate and plan for them accordingly. So one of the things that we see ourselves doing is that we need to start looking at the ELD roadmap a little bit more. And we also need to plan and planning to um hire an ELD teacher to do as designated ELD with those scholars. Um, so to support them for the school year. Um, and that's what I have for goal two.
Awesome. We're trying to stay on target. All right. So um date, the, the fun, fun level three data. The first thing that I want to acknowledge about our data is that uh it should be this, right? We test kids to get into North Star. This is what it should look like. So uh when we look at data, yes, we look at these data pieces. But for us, what's more important is that we look at growth data. We should be taking kids from where they're at, which if they're, you know, two years advanced, they still need to grow another year. And so when we do our data analysis, we do it a little bit differently. Uh, again, I gave you some deep dives into what that looks like. If you want to keep going for a couple. Um, just right there. Uh, if you look in the tier two teacher reflection, you'll see that what we actually do, and I think I just gave you a student or a teacher, oh, I've, there's a lot of examples in there and you can kind of find, there's also in the teacher reflection form, there's a uh example of what um we look for, but we really need to for North Star, we really need to think differently about our data. We need to be making sure that kids, no matter where they're at, are making progress. We don't want them to just come to North Star and be like, okay, they're on grade level, everything's fine, right? We really need to be taking them the next step. So we really dive into that with our teachers. Um, one of the really cool things that we've done, that Kelly and I have done this year is we have made a commitment to be in the classrooms every day to see what's going on. And we did a very cool thing where we took what the district gave us in terms of alignment for um for our um learners framework. I have to make sure I'm using all the right terms. Uh, and Kelly and I, so we created these teacher reflection sheets where Kelly and I actually write, every time we go into a classroom, we write a narrative about what we saw. And I gave you an example in there of one of them. And then we actually highlight when we see examples of something in the learner's framework. So for example, we then were able to take that data and pull apart how many times we saw examples of empowered learners. That was sixty. That was our highest, right? How many times we saw uh knowledge constructors? That was fifty-three, kind of in the middle. How many times we saw effective uh collaborators? That was fifty-four. And how many times we saw creative communicators? That was twenty. So that gave us a real idea, like this is an area we should be focusing on in making sure that when we're having our staff meetings with our teachers, we're talking about, okay, what ways can you increase that? We also noticed in that that different teachers were highest in different areas. There wasn't one teacher that was highest in all of them. It was different teachers. So that lets us do the same thing, which is that you were talking about with principals is you can be like, okay, this is an area of weakness for you. This person is really strong. We want you to go see their classroom. So that's been a really effective tool for us that we've been able to use. We also do a lot with teacher feedback. We want to know how they're feeling, how they're assessing themselves. I think I gave you an example of like a tier two reflection that I stole from Nick. I will give him credit for that. Um, and I mean, we adapted it to us and actually took something that Nick was like, we should have done this on it. So then I did it and it looked great. Um. But it really helps us get back to this idea of growth, right? For our teachers and for our kids. We need to move them from where they're at to a year or two ahead. And that's really something when we're looking at this kind of data that we're focused on. I think that's all. I should have brought water. Um. Okay, the next section, and I do, I'm going to go quickly through this, but I think this might be really important for you all, because this is very North Star specific.
Hold on, let this walk.
Oh, sweet. See, it did it again, John. It likes to, thank you. Um. No, no, this is the right side. So North Star specific. Uh, we were given directives after the North Star Forward Committee um in four specific areas. So I wanted to kind of update you on how we're doing with those. So the first one is universal testing. This, we really have seen quite a big difference because of this. So I really want to thank you because I was pushing for that for a long time. Um, and we're seeing, we're starting to see the results that we wanted to see, which is we are increasing our Bayside attending students' representation. I know it's like, it's still only seven, but that's seven. I'm so excited. And we increased it by fifty-eight percent, which I was like, that's a good number. So that has been really helpful. We did a whole series of things, I think it's coming, but about how like how we did that, you know, John and myself or Dr. Baker, myself and um Michelle and Jorge, we went out to the schools, which I think made a big difference. We brought them in and helped with sort of meeting them where they were at. So we're really excited about those seven. Um. We also, when we talked about this in site council, one of the pieces of information that we still need to know is there's a population of, of families that live in the Bayside that are represented in Bayside attending schools, right? They may live there, but transfer and then transfer to North Star. So that's going to be an important piece of data for us to understand too, when we're looking at transportation, which is coming up. Um, the other very exciting thing is that we've increased um our bilingual staff or Spanish speaking staff um to twenty-five percent, which is also very exciting. Um, Wendy, I have to give Wendy credit for that. She's been super helpful and just figuring out who would be a good fit at North Star and, and helping to sort of cultivate that idea of what kind of representation we're having for our kids. So that's very exciting. And then the second two. Oh, wait, okay, go back. They were the first two. There should be one on transportation. Go back one more. Yeah, there you go. So commute, no, one more forward, this one. Okay, so transportation, we have a whole system figured out, which we're very excited about. I just talked to Martin about it. I mean, he already knew, but I was talking to him about it today. Um, we're going to do a survey of families to find out who wants to come um via transportation. And I've been working with Enrique Calderon to make sure that students can actually go back to their homeschools for aftercare. Um, that way families can pick up in their neighborhoods and they can remain connected with their neighborhood sort of communities through the after school program. And he's been super helpful and on board with that. And then the communication and outreach, we did a great job of bringing families in. We gave them a personal tour and you know, we really, it was really neat to see them come together as a community at the school. They really, we, in fact, we had offered transportation for the tour and one of the families Kate like took us up on it. We went and picked them up and then brought them over. And then they were there and they're like, oh, my neighbor's here, they'll just take me home like, and that was something they wouldn't have known if they hadn't sort of come together. So that, that's, that, that's been awesome. And a shout out to Jorge and Michelle Ramon uh for making all that happen because they really helped us bring all that together. Okay, now the conclusion. Thanks, Liz.
So looking at our school events, our school community is based on the voice and ideas of all of our stakeholders, our scholars, our parents, our staff. Um, this year we had our traditional events like the Fall Play and the Spring, or the Spring Musical, which was frozen. And as a parent of a kindergartner, she came dressed in her Elsa dress and she sat there mesmerized. We had our own little sing along. But it was just an example of our community. I mean, you, uh, the parents, the hours that were spent by parents, building the sets, painting the sets, helping them practice running their lines. And then the whole community came to support them and watch them on stage. That's community. Um, some of the best events are run by our student council with Mr. Havy. Um, again, our student voice there, our, you know, they've just finished the carnival, they'll be doing field day. Um, and of course the middle school dance, shout out to all those teachers who joined me on those Friday nights, um, to chaperone. Um, and then of course our partnership with our PTO and our families um also bring a lot of community opportunities. Last year, we uh for the first time did a celebration of cultures. Um. It was our first time as a community back together after COVID. So one, to be back together as a community felt amazing. And then two, it was about the scholars. It was talking about who they are, who, who represent for uh North Star. So that was a great um time. So May twelfth will be celebration of cultures. So mark on your calendars and come join us. Um, another new event this school year was put on by the dads' club, which was Field of Nights, which was um our lawn was covered in tents because they had a big sleepover. There was um barbecue snacks, movies, games, all of those fun things. Um, it was a great evening. I mean, who doesn't want to spend the night at school, right?
All safely done. Don't worry, no fire hazards were broken.
Um, and then if we move on to school, uh, student voice, um, as we said, our student voice and choice is kind of core to who we are at North Star. Um, we see it in our classrooms, the way that our scholars are collaborating, the way they're sharing their knowledge, the way that they're expressing themselves, talking about, sharing their thinking. Um, we truly are empowering them to be global citizens. Um, we see it in our enrichments. Um, we always survey the scholars to see what do they want to do in the afternoons, matching with their credential. Um, but we find a way to have their voice. And then we partner with our teachers, right? What are your interests? What do you want to bring into the classroom? Um, and together we have a robust enrichment program in the afternoons. Um, we see that in our KNSA, which is our student-led broadcasting weekly, our Griffin Gazette, which is our newspaper. Uh, and then we see it in student council, like Cloud, our student council leads our monthly our monthly uh assembly flag salutes. And of course they're in charge of our spirit days. So April seventh, come on Biden North Star, dresses your favorite cartoon character. Um, and we'll show you around. And then we also have lunch clubs. Those are a huge hit. You know, we started the year with art club and art club and uh book club and our GSA. And then they just started coming up to us. We want this club, this club. So now we have a chess club. We have a Pokemon club. We have a knitting club, Wilderness Survival Club. Um, and our response is always the same. Go find a teacher who's willing to host you during lunch. And they always do. So shout out to our teachers who are willing to give up their quiet lunch hour, uh, forty minutes to uh be with the kids.
Um, to learn all about cat videos.
And then I think lastly, one of my truly favorite things that we're actually in the midst of right now is our student-led conferences. Um, our scholars have been working hard on creating presentations, slide decks to share with families. Their academic growth, their successes, their goals for next trimester. It's truly this time where everyone comes together, teacher, student, parent, and we're celebrating who they are. We're empowering them. Um, so it's an exciting time right now in North Star.
It is. It's awesome. All right, uh, there's so many parents we could thank for all that they do. The, the parent community is so strong from fundraising. These are our two site council presidents, Colleen and Felicia, our dad's club. We've got parent volunteers. They do a huge amount of fundraising. And then they also come together to really, you know, talk seriously about real world problems that are happening at North Star and, and all around in their lives. So um, we're really grateful. We have an amazing community. And I just want to shout out and thank Kelly for being an awesome right-hand partner for me. We, I feel incredibly lucky and grateful to have her and Carolyn, who really gets mad at me every time I talk about her, but she really, the three of us function as a unit. And with that, we're able, Carolyn does a lot of the uh sort of academic coaching, like she's in the classroom, she has conversations about what's happening and in a way that doesn't feel like punitive because she's a coach, she's not an evaluator. And so we're really able to have these meaningful conversations with teachers about their practice and, and how to really improve what we do every day. So um, the last slide, I have a lot of asks, unlike Melissa, one, I was like, well, sorry, I have a few more things to ask. But I do want to echo uh the sentiment of come and visit. First of all, Elisa, I'm sorry I spelled your name wrong. Leslie caught it. And so I, I need to apologize. Uh, I will correct it, but uh I did, Leslie showed me. Um, it really is helpful for our community to see you see us. I know that sounds kind of silly, but um we understand that let's be honest, we're a little bit of a lightning rod for the, the community and we understand that. But having you understand and see firsthand from our kids about who they are and why they've chosen to come to North Star and what it is about North Star that is of value to them really helps them feel seen and heard. And so I just want to to say thank you and gratitude for those of you who do that. Thank you for teaching. I hear you're teaching a, a class. If anybody else wants to teach uh a class uh for um Festival of Social Studies. Thank you. There's lots of names for things. Um, you know, you're welcome to come. Yeah, you could do a whole thing on government. It would be great. Anyway, um, so there's a lot. Uh, one thing that I was asked very specifically by my site council, because I get this all the time, is this notion of foreign language and specifically foreign language in middle school. I'm sure you hear this from a lot of people, so we're not new in asking that, but um we definitely I, I always tell parents like, well, there are, you know, immersion programs that you can be a part of. And if language is important to you, you should do that. But they do have a point that at other schools, like you can go to middle school and have like an academic language class. We have funded those in the past. They're very difficult, very expensive to sustain, um, when they're just sort of on a single school level, but I would like to sort of make a, make a pitch for that. All right, I think that's it. I know we went over, but I don't think by too much.
Thank you again for the presentation and I will go ahead and open it up to you guys to speak.
All right, I'll go. All right. So thank you so much for the presentation, all the great work that you, the teachers and the staff do to support your kids. So that's amazing. Um, I really appreciated in particular the quantitative work on the equity metrics. So diving into there and then seeing those improvements, um, you know, yes, it's uh just seven, but You know, yes, it's just seven, but it's seven. And that's a number that's moving up and to the right is, is really wonderful to see. I had heard some comments from the community in terms of after care, after school care costs being higher at North Star for.
They're about the same.
Okay. All right. So
But yes, there is a concern, like if kids are at, sorry.
No, no.
If kids are at schools that have funding, like other Aces funding and so forth, the costs are much lower, but at North Star, we don't qualify for those metrics. So it's a privately funded thing. I, I would have to ask Melissa about like exact cost of NKCE and Clipper, but we, we can talk about that later.
Yeah, I think the concern was that that might be an inhibiting factor for Bayside families to
Are connecting with.
Right. Yes. Awesome. Thank you. Sorry. No, 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 it's great. So I also agree with, you know, the point about it's all about the delta versus where they're at. The kids are going to test well because they have to test well to get into the school. So that's unsurprising. So the data that I really enjoy looking at are the deltas. So the click throughs on the iReady, for instance, and I noticed that for North Star, the iReady math and English, only about 21% of the students advanced at least a level in math from fall to winter, and only 15% advanced to level in English. And I'm just wondering if that's as expected, especially since for like Roy Cloud, for instance, 33% of students advanced at least one level in math and 36% of students advanced at least one level in English.
Yes, they're, they are typical with what we have seen in the past. I think that's a fair question. I think it's, our kids are sort of in a different space and it's a little bit, you know, more, this is not an excuse, but it is more challenging when they're at the higher levels to make that large of growth. But what we do is we, when we're looking at data, we really look down into specific student data. So each teacher could tell you which kids made the growth and which kids didn't. So that's generally how we tackle that is not looking at like, you know, the whole sort of section, but looking at the individual student. But I, I definitely think there's something there to look at.
Okay. I mean, are there targets that you would like to see hitting in terms of what percentage of the class advance at least one level and I ready from one measurement point to the next?
Well, you mean a whole grade span because that was from September to December. So I'd like to see them move wherever they are at least one year's growth from, you know, the beginning of the year to the end of the year. One of the things that we're talking about is actually running iReady. I have to talk to Liz about this. At the end of the year so that we have a full year of iReady growth to be able to look at exactly that.
I would love to see that data. Thank you. Awesome. Thanks so much.
Thanks, Sarah and Kelly for presenting on North Star tonight. And thanks, I actually really enjoyed hearing about the community, the, the climate and kind of going off script of the slides and sort of sharing with us kind of the challenges and how you're addressing them and the tools that you're putting in there. I, I thought it was very transparent and honest and I appreciate it. I always learn a lot every time I talk to you. And so, you know, thanks. I, I do think that, you know, I, I'm glad that there's effort going on for outreach and changing the demographics of the school so that it's more closely aligned to the rest of the district. There's still a lot more there. I know that you're working on it and pushing through it. So I don't want to harp on it too much, but there's, there's definitely a lot of work to do there. And the, the, there's a systemic, there's something in the system there that's not right, that, that sets up the demographics of the school where it is. And I think we just need to keep working on that to detangle it. Thank you for that effort.
So kind of piggybacking on that, just to start with, I thank you for your presentation. I appreciate it. I thank you for your honesty, I think, around the school climate and your transparency there. There's a lot of growth to be done, but I think you know that. And so we appreciate that and, and just calling awareness to that. I am very happy to see the changes that you want to make that you've talked about with SFS. The committee to review discipline in the handbook, I think, is really important. And I agree, I think that that should be a district wide initiative. I think that consistency in our discipline across all of our school sites is important. I really like the idea of bringing on a DEI parent in that role. So thank you for that. Again, also really happy that we're doing the universal testing. I think that's really important. And you know, like you said, we went from what, three to seven students. So there's some growth there. It's not huge, but I think just like looking at test scores, seeing the growth is what's important. And so I'm happy to see that you've made the growth from three to seven students. And I hope that we continue to see more growth from Bayside students over the next coming years. Transportation, I think, is huge for the after school. So thank you for looking at that. I think that's going to make a big difference for bringing on Bayside students. And then just one thing I wanted to highlight, I think Kelly, it was on your presentation, but you didn't mention this one. The book fair that raised money for the Hoover Library, I think is fantastic that seeing our schools like partner with each other like that and support each other in areas where Hoover might not have the ability to raise those funds. So that's just amazing. And thank you to the North Star community for that. I think that should be congratulated.
That was, that was actually the brainchild of one of our parents who's the R C E F. The new R C E F.
Yeah.
And it was honestly like such a joy. Like it was, the kids loved it. The parents loved it. It was, it was really awesome. I, I should have put that in there bigger, but.
No, I'm glad that I saw that.
Oh, Sarah. Yes.
Of course. Looking forward to teaching a class for the Festival of Social Studies. So thank you. I know Carla's in the audience and Carla and committee, thanks for the invite. So that'll be fun.
Any of you are welcome.
All right. Thank you so much, Sarah and Kelly. It's always nice to hear from you and hear about what's going on at North Star. And I wanted to echo, you know, a few things. I really appreciate the honesty about a variety of things. And I appreciate the leadership in taking on some of these bigger issues that I think I agree, you know, particularly the things around consistency and discipline. Also really looking at our curriculum and opportunities to bring in additional voices. And I know we've done that at other schools as well, but I think anything that you learn, and I know you talk to your colleagues on a regular basis, you know, that's the kind of best practices we want to see. And I will say, having been on the board for a long time, I do see inconsistencies in how we deal with behaviors and things like that. So I think anything that you can do, working with your colleagues and with, you know, Dr. Baker and Liz and Wendy and others. I think that's great. And I applaud you for taking that on, really. And loved hearing, you know, the shout out to our mental health team that you have at North Star as well as, you know, I just want to give a shout out to our mental health at every school site. We've been very fortunate that, you know, with some of the COVID stimulus money. You know, we put, we put a big emphasis on that and we've never had as many resources in mental health as we've had in the last year, really, year or two. I mean, you know, having been around for a while, we just have not been, you know, we haven't been where we wanted to be. So I appreciate you highlighting that. I think it's really important for our kids. So thank you for saying that. I agree, you know, the, the focus, why actually, actually, well, the, I guess, sort of the equity focus in addition to what we talked about. You know, just that DEI lens with the parent and really thinking about events and inclusivity and how you invite people in. I think that's so important. Uh, let's see, I loved the, you know, the enrichment program and then the clubs, all the lunchtime clubs. What a great way to engage kids. Again, it's kind of this leadership that they're taking ownership of what they're doing. And I just feel like that, that goes a long way. And thanks to the teachers who are taking those on. And I did want to say for both schools and just for all of our teachers out there, thanks to all the teachers and the parents. Really make, makes a huge difference in what we're able to offer. And then finally, I did want to say that I really appreciate the parents at North Star recognizing the wealth of resources at that school with parent involvement, doing things for other schools. And I know that some of them are involved with the Redwood City Education Foundation, doing things for Hoover. Some of them go over and volunteer at the other schools. I think that is so important to share the wealth of that, of the, you know, for the whole district. So thank you for highlighting that. And I think as much as we can continue to encourage that, I think it's great. And then actually, the one thing I did say is, you know, thank you for the North Star Forward directives and kind of highlighting that. Again, you know, I think we all want to see movement faster, but I, I agree with you. When you see 58% or you see 25%, I mean, the, the percentages are, are great, right? So let's continue on that path and do more, as Mike said. So thank you. All right.
Great. Again, I appreciate it. One thing that I do want to say, I think by far, I love your newsletter. I absolutely like put on your video and it's almost like, I mean, I put myself, obviously I'm still a parent with the district, right? But I look at your video and I don't really have to read. I, I scroll through. I mean, I see what's coming on and look at what you have to say. I love your enthusiasm, your love for the students. And I think I've said that before. I think three years ago, when you presented the first time I was here as a board member. I was like, oh my God, I wish all the schools were like North Star, right? Because I think you guys, again, as a team, do a great job. I also want to mention, like Alyssa said, mental health. I do want to give a shout out to Dr. Baker and everyone in the team from admin services to educational services, the people that work on the contracts, the people that hire the, you know, human resources, the hire, the, the staff, again, the teachers, the awesome clinicians that you guys have, that we have to serve our students. So that's great. I love that you're thinking ahead about hiring and perhaps an ELD teacher. I think, you know, again, you guys are doing a really awesome job. The transportation piece, I guess, my question with that was, I know, you know, with funding, is this something that you guys would do? Is this North Star funding? Is this Redwood City funding? So that was going to be my question regarding that. Cause then obviously right now we're talking transportation. Is this for the six or seven students? Or are we talking transportation along, you know, in the future?
We need to find out. That's the answer. We'll, we'll start with a survey to see who would be interested in where they are located. We were talking with Camelia about identifying which of our families live in the, you know, in the boundaries of Taft, Hoover and Garfield. And once we have identified them, then our plan is to create a survey to send to them to see who would use it. We're, we're really excited because we have this great brain idea of using Camelia, who's our office manager and really our center, our hub for our Spanish speaking families. She has a bus driver's license.
She's the best driver.
So she'll like part of her job, I mean, we'll have to extend her hours, but part of her job will be to get the bus and go take them and then bring them back. And then, you know, and, and it will be sort of a community built. She does so much to build that community already. Just with the parents and it's really, I know this sounds so silly, but we hear Spanish in our office all the time now. And just that representation of hearing their language, she talks to Kelly's daughters in Spanish, like, you know, because we do have a lot of kids who are bilingual, even if Spanish isn't their first language. She's really bringing that in. So.
So to answer your question, it'll be Redwood City School District funded. The reason why I'm saying that it's not only for North Star, but don't forget our students from Garfield as they come over to MIT. And as I told the parents, there would be transportation for those students. So it's going to be funded. Rick and I are working on that.
If, if having staff be able to drive because they happen to have a school bus driver's license.
She was a bus driver before.
Right, right. If, if that turns out to be a very happy coincidence, is that something we could rinse repeat by like helping sponsor other staff members get their bus driving licenses?
We have been sponsoring other staff members.
Your two chest moves ahead of me.
We, we have somebody right now that's working in students with Antonio and Student Services who has, who had a license in another country and now is getting trained. Yeah. We just don't want them to go like next door. If you know what I mean.
And then I think the last thing I want to say is I love the, the student led conferences. I think again, talk about student voice, they're able to interact with their parents, a teacher. And so, you know, you said you empower them. So that's, that, that's a big, you know, a plus. And then I do want to give Ms. Williams credit. I do want to say she probably doesn't remember me, but like 10 years ago, she was an awesome administrator at Kennedy when my now middle child was there. So I really appreciate your help. And you know, you're still here after, you know, you, you came back. So you know, we know Redwood City is great. So I appreciate it.
Do you mind? I forgot something. I, I did want to, I, I realized I had that up top and then you weren't standing there. And so I, but I did want to just say, Carolyn, thank you so much for spending so much time with our district. And I know, you know, John is always like trying to get you and other who had retired, but we bring you back. So I just want to say thank you. And I mean, what an amazing thing to have her as a coach, right? For everybody on the site. So thank you.
For everybody on the site. Really, truly.
Okay, so Sarah and both you and Kelly, I want to acknowledge the SFS partnership that you brought through to North Star. We had a bumpy road in the fall. And in talking to a couple of parents and students, we need to go in a direction to really take this hate, this, the speech and the bias and deal with it. I applaud you both for going in that direction. These percentages, I didn't, I, we didn't talk about the percentages this morning or meeting. I did not think they were this high. Well, sorry to interrupt, but. Maybe so, but I can take this offline with you with what I talk. I mean, right, right, right. So with the work that you're doing with Greg, and I know there's some more coming and Greg has not only been working at North Star, but also has been doing a lot of work with, with Hoover. And I know he started out working with Michelle Griffiths and her team way back when. And just to make sure that students, parents, and I know it's very difficult to bring those biases forward. But this is the first step and I'm glad you're taking it. I really am. As he says, we all have them. And when you realize that, you know, it's, it's eye opening. And you want to do something about it. So I, I thank you. And the meeting that you had with the parents just a while ago. Very thankful that you did that. Very thankful. So thank you both for taking that on. And of course, as, as Alyssa just said, we need to look, you know, district wide. And he is a good resource and the people that he has brought forward, forward, you know, have all been educators at one time. And I'm not working for him as a matter of fact, a couple of our own teachers are now, you know, working for him, you know, when they're not teaching. They've become coaches and, and presenters themselves. So kudos for that. And the DEI piece with the parent role, that's great. That's great. It's something you should talk to other colleagues about. And when we're in principals meetings and we should start sharing more and with yourself and with Melissa and.
I was gonna say, Melissa, actually Greg was saying that they did that at Cloud.
Right. We did it. We did it at the end of last school year and some of the board members were there with me. Mike was there with me. But I think we did it at the end of the year, but doing it now and the results, well, we haven't seen the results, but the involvement that you're getting is great. And, and, and we did it. It was late. It was like the end of May, when I think we were there, right? But again, kudos for that. And then the DEI piece is really great that parents are going to take on that responsibility. Cause a lot of this starts on, it starts at home. We know about that. Great. The other piece, the foreign language, I've heard that. I've heard it not only from you, but I've heard it from Melissa's community also. If there's a way. Parents have approached me, if there's a way that it could be shared maybe between two community, between two school sites or several school sites. It'd be a lot easier to fill position, a full time position. And also you not only have Ms. Williams, who continues to work with us, but you also have another retiree that's at your school site, Barbara Reinhardt, who has done amazing things. She was one of my teachers many, many years ago in kindergarten and now, and I go, what are you doing? She goes, that's what I'm doing. And I go, okay, all right. And, and it's great to see that her, her, her children are grown up and one, I guess, in med school now. Oh my gosh. So kudos to, you know, just going out there and So, um, kudos to, you know, just going out there and seeing who you can garner to come and really, um, work well with you and your team. And thank you and your teachers and your parents and Leslie, thank you. I know it's your last year. Yeah, you know, for, uh, being at North Star, you came back from the private outside and, um, kudos to Peyton. And you know what I'm talking about? So thanks a lot.
Thank you.
And you know, before you go, I did forget to mention something. Um, what I really felt it was important was you talked about how you observe your teachers and you look at their strengths and their weaknesses. And then you kind of move them around. I don't know how you move them around, but and obviously I'm not, um, and obviously I'm not the educator, but that's maybe another thing that again, among administrators or, you know, principals, you guys can talk and see, are, are those type of strategies, something that works very well for you guys that would then work for other school sites? Cause I think that's awesome. You know, again, I'm not a teacher, but I think it would help so that I, I want to make the comment because I think that's very important. So if it's working for you guys, you know, and maybe they, they do that too, right? But, um, I wanted to point that out. So thank you.
And just one more thing, the PD that we're doing every Thursday, hey, you're taking it and moving it forward. Great to see, not only yourself, but also, um, it's, it's turned out to be a great time to utilize, to have you all there, have you working in groups and going through the professional development. And thank you, Liz. And Liz has created that for site administrators and for the rest of us in the district office. And it's kind of, um, I have our wonderful presenters and you're probably the only one that you, that meets with the county and utilizes them in this fashion, but they're presenting to the superintendents on Friday. So they'll probably get, you know, more business. I, I, I just point out everything that we're doing, you know, and, and.
Can I say something about that?
Sure.
It's really good. They're just, you know, we've done PD for a long time and, you know, there's lots of different kinds. But this particular round that we've been doing, I mean, we, we catch ourselves saying like, oh, asset-based language. And, you know, like we, it really, it's sinking in, in a way that, um, hasn't always been the case. I mean, it, it's been, you know, pandemic and so it's, I'm not blaming other things, but this just has been incredibly meaningful. So really thank you from all of us. I feel like we, we talk about it behind your back a lot and we really say it's awesome. Like we really, everybody that I've talked to about it has really, it, it feels meaningful. So thank you.
Can I just say on the professional development, I mean, we've come a long way. Cause I remember when I started as a board member, what 15 plus years ago, the rumblings we would get about some of the PD we were doing at the time. Teachers were not excited about it. Principals were not excited about it. And I mean, we, we, I mean, this has been now going on for years where, where I feel like, you know, we, we started to engage our teachers years ago with our professional development team. We've had, you know, good leadership, Liz, you've done an extraordinary job. But I mean, you look at like where we're at now from where we were, right? 15 years ago, and it's just night and day. It's just amazing. So thank you so much, Liz and the whole team. And then, you know, thank you for acknowledging that because I think it's important. Right, but, but you brought them in, you guys brought them in, right? I mean, I don't, how did we get them?
She brought them in and she plans with them each week.
Exactly. So, yeah. Got yourself on the back.
Because I thought, you know, when I, when I speak with the superintendents, you know, it's, it's not me that's planning with these individuals from the county office each week. It's, you know, CNI that does it.
So that's awesome.
Right. They, they probably will be next year though, no, after Friday's presentation, I'm sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, share the wealth. And when you're, when you're the president of the association this year, it's every, every, every time we meet, there's this agenda and you just like kind of fill it. Sure, definitely.
The agenda, uh, item seven discussion items, um, nine point, I'm sorry, nine discussion items. Nine point one is first reading and discussion of board policy, zero, four, six, zero, local control accountability plan.
And thank you to the board policy committee for meeting regarding these three, uh, upcoming policies. This particular one reflects the LCAP and new laws that include stakeholder engagement portions and then the inclusion of students really in 2024, but looking ahead and how we're gathering student data and then having their contributions, um, look differently over the next two years. Are there any additional questions?
I mean, um, Liz answered the question in email, but maybe you just talk a little bit about the student committee so that the other board members can hear about it. Um, cause I just thought it was interesting. This is, you know, I actually recall that we had student voice in the LCAP before, but to see it kind of formalized and how it puts in it, just maybe a minute, no more.
Thanks. I can do it. I can do it in a minute. So a couple of years ago, we had, um, the beginnings of a student voice in, in our LCAP. And we met a couple of times with people who, um, Whitney had actually, Whitney, um, through her NUA work had, um, been calling together kids from around the district and just talking. And so we just talked. This year, um, I asked Whitney and my assistant Sarah to put together a program because it needed to be a more robust approach to getting student voice. And it's an amazing approach that they've done in terms of setting up meetings with each school side, where each school has selected student leaders to come and talk and they meet at lunchtime, have, um, a conversation with them. They go through each of the goals, they report out what they think, uh, from their point of view would, um, help them achieve more in reading or in math, or come to school more often and not get suspended or whatever the, the goals are that they're talking about. And they're collecting that data, um, and some, some of the student recommendations about what we might want to spend some money on. To help improve, you know, our outcomes in those areas. And so the information that we're getting from the students will be brought to the next LCAP committee meeting. Yeah, it's, it's, it's pretty amazing.
Okay, um, so, um, hearing, I guess, no other comments or questions. Um, moving on to nine point two, first reading and discussion of board by law, nine, two, two, zero, governing board elections.
Hey, thank you. This, uh, once again is another board policy. And I just wanted to make sure the board was clear because there was a specific section regarding when a tie occurs with an election. And so the board policy committee wanted to make sure we included both options, but our recommendation was, um, option one rather than option two, which is on page four. So I thought that was clear and I had sent it in advance, but just wanted to make sure that that was clear. Cause that's a little unusual when we put them in the policies like that. Any questions about this one?
Great, thank you. Um, nine point three, first reading and discussion of board by law, nine, three, two, three, meeting conduct.
Okay. Once again, this is important to note, especially in, in these remote settings and so forth. But it was updated certainly regarding SB 1100. And then in regards to communication of those that submit comments. There any additional questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, and then item 10 consent i- items, can I please get a motion to approve the consent items?
I'll move to approve.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Action items, 11.1, adoption of resolution 31, establishing Fund 35 County Schools Facilities Fund.
Uh, good evening, members of the board. Tonight we're presenting resolution 31, establishing Fund 35, uh, or I actually say re-establishing Fund 35. Fund 35 was a, uh, district use fund. Uh, we didn't do a lot of research, but the last time quickly we could find it was 2000, 2001. Uh, we are anticipating and actually have received notification, uh, of our first funding from the state allocation board. Uh, for the North Star modernization of about eight hundred and forty thousand dollars. Uh, if memory serves, uh, and, uh, and not talk too much about this and I will talk about it in the future. Uh, but this application was put in in 2019, uh, and we're receiving funding for it now. Uh, we have, uh, several other school sites, uh, that are also eligible that are on the list for funding as long as it lasts through the end of this year. Uh, so this fund will be used to accept that money from the county office. Um, there are certain strings, if you will, attached with this funding from the state, uh, that will go through the board at a later time as we decide how we use that funding for future capital facilities projects. Uh, so that I'll turn it back over to the board for any questions.
So the question is, do you want to receive basically almost a million dollars? I mean, it just seems like a pretty easy thing to approve.
Let me just touch on that. We, we'll receive the money regardless. It, it's where we store it because, uh, with this money that comes, uh, right off the bat, there is audit requirements, uh, where we have to use some of that money to audit ourselves on that money. So this just keeps it clean because we don't have a Fund 35 that's being used. All the money can funnel into that fund, so it's easy to reconcile them to be here.
Can you remind me, where in the state is this coming from?
Uh, the, the state bond.
It is a state, okay, that's what I thought. I just wanted to confirm. Thanks.
Okay, so if there are no questions, can I please, um, get a motion to approve?
Yeah, I'll move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to 11.2, approval of Redwood City School District, 2022, 23, second interim financial report.
I got so excited about Fund 35, I turned it off. Tonight we're presenting the second interim, uh, financial report for Redwood City Schools. Just briefly tonight, uh, I'll give an overview of the budget cycle. Uh, again, just as a reminder, and for those watching at home, uh, our major budget assumptions, uh, going into second interim compared to our major budget assumptions at first interim. Uh, we'll take a quick look at revenue and expenditures, uh, how they look to be projected for, uh, the end of the year. Uh, we'll look at any fund balances, uh, in our other funds, other than our general fund zero, one, uh, as well as take a look at our multi-year projection, uh, and some of the changes that have occurred since the first interim in December. So as we go through this, uh, the yellow star highlight of second interim, uh, is where we're at, uh, in our budget cycle. Uh, I will note, uh, uh, that, uh, excuse me, uh, I was thinking about our audit that will be coming to the board for acceptance as well, a little bit later than normal. Uh, based on some of the, uh, things that happened there that we did not, uh, were not able to facilitate before, uh, this current time. So we're expecting to actually submit that tomorrow and then it'll come back on the 19th, uh, for acceptance by the board. Uh, so a little bit out of order on this in a normal year. Uh, we're now going to go through second interim and then, uh, straight into the may revision by the governor, based on his January budget proposal. Uh, and then, uh, Liz and I will be working collaboratively between LCAP development and budget development, uh, ultimately with the public hearing and adoption in June. So, uh, same slide from, uh, first interim presentation, uh, 42130, uh, requires us to present our first interim with, um, a financial status from July 1 through October 31, uh, a second interim from July 1 through January 31. Uh, and if needed, uh, a third interim, if we were to self-certify as qualified or negative. Uh, once again, I'll tell the end of the beginning, we are going to certify positive or make the recommendation to the board to certify positive, uh, based on the financial status, uh, that we're presenting in our second term report. Moving into budget assumptions, the top, uh, chart is from our first interim report. Uh, the second, uh, chart on there with the yellow highlights or white yellow highlights are the assumptions that we used in the second interim, uh, as we built our models to, uh, present tonight. Uh, you can see the district enrollment is up slightly and projected up slightly, um, for the out year and the second out year. Uh, the local control funding formula, uh, we've, uh, took a non-conservative approach at first interim of seven and a half percent, knowing that it would not, uh, be what school services of California and some other, uh, people said that it would be at that point in time. So we did raise it slightly to the eight point one three that was in the governor's, uh, budget proposal. Um, and we did though, however, go with school services and the other economic advisors of lowering our out year, uh, to three point five four, I believe at first interim we were, well, I can tell you we were at five in the chart above. Uh, so we did take into account, uh, the economic factors that we have, uh, all been seeing, uh, reading about, uh, and then told about, uh, over the course of the last several months, um, to do this. To do this, another one on here is the projected increase to Calpers for the employer rate of contribution to the retirement system. So these major assumptions were all included in the second interim report. So the next couple of slides are from the budget book that was included. But just to call out the changes where you won't see this in the multi-year projection that's in the slide deck, but to see the differences in what we anticipated as revenue at adopted budget way back in June through first interim, and then the minor changes to second interim through the expected revenue. This is a breakdown of the sources of revenue. Totally a hundred percent and a hundred and thirty seven million dollars anticipated as we close out this fiscal year in June. Here's just a pie chart breakdown of where our revenues come from. And as you can see, over fifty percent barely right now come from our property tax revenues. I will say this along with our expenditures that will start to shift back again to where the property taxes take up a bigger percentage of revenues because of the one-time spending from the COVID funds as it's being used and moving out of the system through, especially through next year and a little bit in the third year. You'll see that pie chart shift a little bit where property taxes are a bigger resource for our local revenue.
Are those one-time funds under the other state revenue?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
And federal. So here on expenditures, you can see the the same slide with adopted first interim and second interim. We did have an increase in expenditures that we were not anticipating at first interim, and I will thank Liz for for that and the work that she's doing with some of this money that we didn't expect to spend until our second and third year in this budget cycle, that she's able to ramp up some of those services and supports immediately to put that money out. Some of it will be spent based on, you know, books and supplies and some services. Others may not be spent, but they're encumbered at this point based on if we can hire personnel or we can get those resources in. So this number is likely to change somewhat as well by the time we come back with estimated actuals and budget adoption for twenty three, twenty four. Here's a breakdown of expenditures in our main categories, salaries, benefits, supplies, services and other operating expenses, primarily contracts. And from this, just just over seventy five percent of this is towards salary and benefits. Here's a pie chart of that illustrating the previous chart. So when we look to this, our ending fund balance, you can see our ending fund balance on the for second interim of approximately twenty seven million dollars, which is a reduction of three point four million. Once again, not picking on my friend to my right, but those programs and services she's trying to implement was the reason why that went down in this fiscal year is projected to rather than in our out years. There was a question that I thought I would make just a point of on here. The legally restricted amount, right? Those funds came out of that primarily. And that is in the book, but it's all those one-time funds. It's all the educator affecting the grants. Expanded Learning Opportunities Program and Grant, all of these different combination of one-time funds are making up this restricted carryover. Moving on to multi-year projections. There's there's a couple of noticeable differences in here from first interim. One is, you know, the increase in expenditures. And two, we were also able to, for second interim, reduce our transfers in from our RDA funds. So we cut RDA funds by about two and a half million dollars in twenty three, twenty four. And just under two million in twenty four, twenty five. So those ones will still be available, but for the second interim report, they were not needed at this time to meet our minimum reserve for economic uncertainty. So coming to this page, this is really what our ending fund balance is composed of with our restricted ending balances. And then our unassigned, unappropriate ended balance. With the reduction of the RDA fund transfer in at this point in time, we did have to reduce the board mandated reserve that we had projected at first interim at one and a half and three percent. But I can tell you, if we were to put those funds back in as they were at first interim, we would be at almost two percent and three percent of the board mandated reserve. So how do we look at it? The results about the same. It's either we transfer in and we have that reserve, or we don't transfer in. And we're meeting our minimum reserve for economic uncertainty, but we're not meeting the board mandated reserve. Important to note, though, on here, on that last gray line of the unassigned, unappropriated imbalance, you can see a one point two five one million next year is anticipated or projected. And then four hundred and eight thousand dollars, which we could have also moved into the board mandated reserve, but it would have been really funky with a, you know, point nine six of one percent and, you know, a point four of another percent. So at this point, left in the unassigned and unappropriated ending fund balance line.
And do you mind if I make a comment?
Yeah, just since we're on the slide. So this is one of the things that I checked in with Rick on is I was asking if the projected salary increases for this year and next year were included. And they're not, which is basically, we don't include them until they're finalized, which makes sense. But what that means is that, of course, that would be in addition to. And so then the my next question was, where's the money coming from? And of course, in the conversations we've had, it'll be a combination of moving some of that RDA money back in and also looking at opportunities for budget cuts. We're going to have to look to trim in other areas in order to do the salary increases. So I just think that's really important for the community. No, I mean, the board already knows this because we've had a lot of conversations about it. But I think it's important for the community to understand that when you look at these numbers. So you get to that third year, we're at four hundred and eight thousand dollars, which is the unappropriated ending balance because we have, you know, we have restricted stuff that we can't touch, but that's the flexibility. That's not going to cover the kinds of salary increases we're talking about with our bargaining units. So in other words, just the community needs to be prepared that it will be a combination of using some one-time funds through the RDA and then looking at budget cuts. Which is always painful to talk about. I mean, we don't have a lot of fat in our system, but we know we're going to have to do that in order to do the right thing by our our staff, our teachers and our staff. So.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you for that.
Yeah, yeah, of course.
And then just because I like the green checkmark for a positive certification, I'll point that out again on the on the bottom. And clearly, we are positively certifying with this. I'm not going to say with tons of room to spare, but enough that we're not trying to find dollars and cents to make to meet our minimum reserve. On this slide is simply our projected ending fund balances for Fund Twelve, Thirteen, Fourteen, Twenty One, Twenty Five, and Forty. At a budget option, there'll be a Fund Thirty Five added to that as well with the money received as that goes forward. But as you can see, everything is pretty much on track to where it was at. The building fund is going down as expected as we're nearing the end of the major T-bond program as we heard earlier this evening. So areas to monitor, obviously, the state and national economy. There are still mixed signals. I know a big topic lately has been the banking industry and what's happening there. I will share that the financial advisor for the county treasury spoke to the CBO group last Thursday and provided information about how these investments are handled to ensure liquidity. And they feel they're in a very good position with their liquidity standard or what they're shooting for on that. And there is also a reminder that the property taxes come in, also allow for cash flow in these times for the county treasury and the and the funds that are held there. So something we'll still continue to monitor, but it's not like we're down at the bank on the corner. Hoping there's not a run on them. So that's good. We still have shortages of teacher substitutes and classified staff that Wendy and Liz are trying to fill through various methods. You know, I made noted that that some of the spending that Liz has encumbered or anticipates to cover may not come true because we may not be able to hire some of those positions in the latter half of this year. As Lisa just mentioned, the employee negotiations, right? We're trying to finalize all of those this spring as well. And then, of course, there's always the uncertain education funding in California. And what comes next at May revision? I think we're all looking forward to that to see how our governor is going to handle his projected shortfall with a combination of cuts and the use of rainy day funds that's still unclear at this point. And then, as always, enrollment. We're still in a state of declining enrollment that is directly impacts our budgeting right as we go forward, even though we're not funded on enrollment. But making sure that we're staffed appropriately in the midst of still declining enrollment. You know, we are projecting higher than we projected before. But it's still less than we were at. Right? So we have to take that into consideration along with the nuances and the programs at these individual sites that we're hearing about on a weekly basis. And the different needs to address their community. So with that, next steps. Before I go through all of this, it's just kind of amazing to me that we're in March and we're looking at the last four months of this fiscal year and school year on this slide, and I'm wondering where it went. When I started in July, I thought, oh, second interim's ten miles away. And now I look back and I felt like I said that yesterday, right? And it's it's here today, here tonight. But tonight is, you know, the second interim report. April, I didn't put it on here, but I spoke about it, the acceptance of the twenty one, twenty two audit report. Along with the work that Liz and I have promised to be good stewards of and work together with LCAP Development and Budget Development during that time period. And continuing on with that into May along with the governor's May revision. And then in June, the public hearings and the ultimately the the approval of the LCAP and adoption of the budget for the twenty three, twenty four school year. So I hope I didn't go too quick. I'm happy to answer any questions and I'll turn it back to the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. I do want to just point something out really quickly. There's somebody in the audience with their hand up, and I'm just curious if they had a question regarding the budget and they just didn't fill out a speaker's card. Or if it was just, okay, great, thank you. I mean, I just want to say, yeah, well. That was a good listen. Janet caught it. But yeah, thank you. David and I were part of the budget committee, so obviously we saw the budget and I want to just say thank you, but I will go ahead and let you guys, if you guys have any questions.
Thanks for putting it together, clearly identifying what changed between the interns. It makes it so easy to to follow what was going on and answering my question, which was just look further ahead in the book and you'll have the answer in there, which which is great. I asked, what was the breakdown of the restricted funds? Because I missed it. It's page fifty three in the book, if anybody's interested. The areas monitor, I think that's that's always helpful to remind us where we should be looking and what we should be paying attention to as we think about. You know, the the final budget and planning for next year. And then we'll just keep, you know, also thinking about like how the inter-fund transfers, what that looks like. Because right now they look terrifying in the future, and I'm sure that as we add in more because that's not an unlimited source, as you know. And as as we go through contract negotiations and we see what the impact of that is and what are the mitigations that we can do for that that Lisa was talking about. You know, we'll just have to pay attention to that and make sure that that's not hiding anything from us that we really do need to pay attention to. But thanks for the presentation. Really clear. Appreciate it.
Yeah, I want to say thank you very much to a very clear presentation, and I appreciate your responsiveness and any questions. I'm glad you brought up that the, was it the county treasurer, or I'm not exactly sure who talked to the CBOs? Who was it?
It was their financial advisor. So it was essentially the KNN for the county.
Right.
The county treasurer is coming on April twentieth to speak to the group.
Okay. And you know, one of the reasons why that's really important is I don't I don't think you were in our county when the Lehman Brothers faulted and it actually affected some of the school districts, including ours. It affected Menlo Park actually hugely because they had just gotten a bond and put all this money there. It affected us a little bit. So I will say when the Silicon Valley Bank started, I wasn't really concerned about that bank because I assumed we didn't have money there. But of course, you know, you're concerned about the spiraling. So I would just say, you know, I'm sure it's something that you and the other CBOs are paying attention to. And my understanding is we put in a lot more redundancies and safeguards, and that won't happen again. But if you could just double down, make sure that's the case. And I don't know if you want to say anything more about what they said, but but you know, it is an uncertain economic time, and we don't want to get caught again where we lose money because, you know, a bank goes bad. Yeah.
Yeah, I I'll, you know, add more as we get through budget development, that type of thing, and
Yeah.
talk about those steps that they're taking. But there was certainty between the type of liquidity they have built into their investments along with receiving property tax receipts coming in on twice a year basis, even though this year it will be pushed out a little bit with some of the natural disasters that have done that for this county for sure. But because of that, there was, there didn't seem to be great panic, right? And and how they also do their cash flow analysis to make sure that they can meet the needs of the entities that invest in that pool.
I don't have any questions, but I want to say thank you for your presentation and thank you to your department also for all their work. And David and Cecilia for sitting on the committee, too. Thanks for your eyes on that ahead of time.
Okay, so if there's no more comments or questions, can I please get a motion to approve the Redwood City twenty two, twenty three, second interim financial report?
I'll move to approve it.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
I.
Board and Superintendent Report twelve point one.
So I don't have any reports from the between the last board meeting and this one, but since I missed the last board meeting, I'm sure that John mentioned it, but I did want to say that I went, I attended the Stanford Award with John and some of the staff for the district's partnership with the work in around mental health. And that was, it was really an honor to be there and a really nice recognition of the district and the work that the district has done. And again, John, just thank you for your kind of foresight on hiring all the the mental, the twelve mental health counselors for our district and getting in ahead of all the other districts before anybody else had that idea to hire them. So and then I was out with the flu, which is why I wasn't here last time. Didn't want to share those germs with you. You're welcome. But I did, I think during that week, get an email from one of the Stanford people that sent the Stanford report that mentioned it. I don't know if that got forwarded to you guys. Probably not. Okay, I'll go ahead and forward that tonight, just so you guys can see that it mentions our CSD and the others that received an award. So that's all I have.
And there was a nice write-up about it in the superintendent's newsletter, along with a bunch of other really, I thought, really interesting. This March one was like, I was clicking on everything in there. It was, it was good. Since the last board meeting, yeah, good, thanks for having me. Since the last board meeting, I went to the Capacito over at Hoover, and Leslie Donelli was there presenting about the LPAC and reclassification. It was hugely informative. I'd say there were probably like twenty parents there, really engaged with questions. I just thought it was really informative to be able to see the scorecard, the different domains, how it's presented to the the parents when they get the feedback there, and then how she and Lupe are really, you know, encouraged parents about like, you know, this is why this is important, what you need to do. So.
Was that the D-LAC you said?
No, it's just that I went over for the principal's coffee.
Oh.
I had no idea what topic they were going to talk about. Yeah, it just happened to be that and it worked out great. And then I saw Kennedy had their. Uh, and then I saw, um, Kennedy had their um, uh, musical uh over the weekend after, you know, their tech week. Having to go through blackouts, I don't know. Who to thank for them on their behalf publicly for the work that I did. Martin, yeah, and of just having to bring generators in and floodlights, yeah, so that they could get it, but. You had no idea, though, when you saw it, it, there was, uh, they did a great job. The dance, the new dance program at Kennedy, one of the new electives is being offered. Um, they did a performance on Friday night as well. Um, the art program painted all the sets, um, so it was repeated at every show. I saw it twice, by the way, because there were two, two casts. And my daughter wanted to see her friends in each of their roles. Um, and uh, that it was something like three hundred Kennedy students and all participated in it between the art program. The performers on stage, the backstage performers, the dance program, uh, so, I don't know, it's a fun event.
I'm really sad I missed it. Um, all right, so, uh, this weekend, I was at the California School Boards Association Board of Directors meeting. We were in Sacramento. And uh, lots going on with that group. Including a lot of legislative action, and speaking of legislative action, we did have the legislative action week. Last week, so they changed it up. We used to go up to Sacramento for one day, but now they do it over a course of a week. And we meet virtually with all the legislators in the state. So they had about, I think, four hundred or four hundred and fifty board members participate up and down the state. We all had the same talking points, so all the legislators got the same thing. I sat in on three of them for Berman, Becker and Pappan. And um. We did have a top opportunity in those and then follow up to talk about staffing. And so I, I did want to say that I did talk to the legislative director about the importance, particularly around retirees. Being able to hire them sooner and for longer. And that is one of the priorities that, it, it wasn't part of ledge action week, but it's one of the priorities that they're working on, so. And, and they, they've heard it loud and clear from lots of us that we have concerns about staffing, so I know that's one of the big legislative priorities. Uh, let's see, um, I attended another. Um, the uh, ah, education AEC, annual education conference committee. And we're working on critical issues there to present, so it should be really good. It's gonna be in San Francisco, remember, so get it on your calendars. And then I had a Redwood City together. Um, meeting, which John and Cecilia were at, and we heard from uh Safe Routes to Schools, all the various things going on there. As well as planning for next year, we're gonna have a, a retreat in June. So, uh, we're planning there and we could share some of them. I don't know if you guys are, you know, I know you guys get so much material, so I don't know if you're interested, but we could forward. Things to you. I know Maria used to do that, but I don't know. If, if you want, just let us know and we can forward information to you. And, oh, and then I met with a community member about the bond and the CBAC.
Um, so again, for me, um, same thing, uh, Redwood City Together, and I do want to give them a shout out. Um, I think it's a great partnership with the Redwood City School District. They're doing a lot of great things for our community, so. I'm really pleased, um, as I emailed Raphael that I'm, I'm happy. I, I know, um. Janet gave up proceed, and so I'm, I'm very happy to be at the table and, um, interacting with, um, all the partnerships, all the community members. And so it's great. Um, and then the other, again, the budget committee, so.
You know, real quick on the Redwood City Together, one of the things I've been very impressed with the last year or two is the addition of people at the table. I feel like we have a much more inclusive group of community members and really looking at that cradle to grave. And then also, they've been very successful in collaborating around grants and bringing in money for our community for youth and families, right? In a way that I don't think we saw a few years ago, so. Uh, Rafiana's team are really doing a great job in that regard, and then, of course, John is spearheading the, the, the staff part of it with that group this year. So thank you for taking the leadership on that. I think you're doing a great job.
So I went to the, of course, we were here together, but the other thing is the workforce housing piece. And I think you each got an email regarding a upcoming meeting. So, uh, we need to talk and then bring it back to this group. Bring it back to a, a, a future board meeting, which will be soon, I hope. I'm not sure if it'll be on the nineteenth or the one right after that, but all depends what happens at our meeting. Okay. And, uh, been meeting with principals to review their, where they are with their goals for this school year, and. They're all working very, very hard, uh, as you noticed today from the two presentations that you viewed. But they're doing a really good job, doing a really good job. I think the PD is really helping. It is really. Something that they're interested in too, and we, it's been such a. We haven't had any in so long, you know. COVID hit, and we just kind of stopped and moved forward with virtual learning and everything, and that was fun, but. This is a lot more, believe me, so they're taking it on, you know, so I, I'm very pleased, very pleased. And then also your sessions of when you meet with the teachers, it's been very helpful when you do your lunch meetings with them. So, that's for me.
Thank you. Um, item thirteen, information on Seminole County Investment Fund.
Yeah, the normal monthly report. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Um, any correspondence? I know we've gotten some emails, yeah. And let's see. Other business suggested for future items?
Um, so just something that we had talked about in a couple of prior meetings, I just want to make sure it didn't get lost in the weeds, was a discussion of possible bulk enrollment of parents as volunteers. So, given that it's super important to have parents be, uh. Get fingerprinted and go through the enrollment process, just trying to find a way that we could maybe batch it together and become a volunteer day. And get people efficiently fingerprinted. Awesome, great, thank you.
Oh, that's.
Awesome, thank you.
Are there any?
Or, uh, yeah.
Vinges to the board meeting calendar?
So on the April nineteenth. Uh, we have a five thirty PM closed session for negotiation. And then, um. At six o'clock. I am. Trying to give information on CBAC roles and responsibilities. It's not solidified yet. So.
So five thirty was a closed session for negotiations. Six o'clock would be roles and responsibilities for CBAC, and then we go into our seven o'clock meeting. Uh, six would be a study session, yeah.
And we'll invite the CBAC. Committee, just to, I mean, it, let them know that it's going on if they want to listen in or.
If they would like to listen in.
Yeah.
And then they are also going to have their own.
Oh, they're gonna have their own. Okay, good.
I think it's our first meeting in May.
May, yeah, May eleventh.
Right, because we do have some new players, so it'd be nice to. Have everybody get the same information. Great, thank you.
For the calendar? Okay, great. Um, and then I think, uh, moving on to, uh, obviously a German, um. I would like to adjourn the meeting and, um, honor a woman's month. I think we have lots of great leaders. Um, a lot of, you know, women teachers, and so not just the teachers, but obviously we want to, you know. Staff, classified staff as well, so, um, and my wonderful colleagues here, so I, if you guys. Would want to second me on that one, I would want to make a motion.
Second it.
Great, thank you. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi, thank you. Have a good evening.